Everyone, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is now seven o'clock for the Board's Selectmen February 7th regular meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, welcome everybody and everybody that has joined us online as well. And at this time, I would open it to public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the board that is not already on the agenda? Do I see any hands raised on, 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 joining us virtually? Okay. Good evening. Hi.
We've been entertaining that letter under public comment, which was your request. I think Kathy had it here somewhere. Yes. Your package should be your second page. Yes, that's it. So if you can just, if you can just recognize it, just to you.
As there is no public comment, but we do have one correspondence from our Bolton Conservation Commission chair, and it is in discussion of a parking opportunity to access the Nathan Hale Greenway. And there's, he has written it and says that they strongly believe that it's safe, maintainable, and accessible parking to the trailhead to the, it says NHG Network is a high priority. And so it goes on with more discussion. I will leave this here. It is now entered that they have presented it to us this evening. And there's a map. And the board can take a look at that discussion at a further meeting, future meeting. Thank you very much. At this time, because it is a school night, I'm going to ask the board's indulgence to change the order around a little bit. And I would like to start with our students. I know you guys need to go early too. We'll get to you. But William Doobie, hi there. Will, I-
Hello.
Hi there. Good evening.
Hello.
How are you?
Good evening. I'm good. How are you?
We'd like to have you here before, we're glad you came, before the Board of Selectmen, and we have some other members of the community and the audience as well. And you were going to talk to us about your Eagle Scout project, the construction of the libraries at the Herrick Park and Senior Center area. Sir, you have the floor. Do you want to share your project?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Would you like to share your project ideas?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I'm-
Having connectivity problems, sir?
Yeah, a little bit.
You want to call back in?
Um, I think it might be okay now.
Okay, go ahead. So tell us about your ideas. It's on our screen. William. But we can't hear you.
No.
You still want to speak?
We have a connectivity issue.
I'm sorry. It seemed to cut out the audio when I did that. I'm sorry.
All right. So would you just read it to us or share with us your vision?
Yeah, I'll do that. So my plan is for two Little Free Libraries, one located, and sorry, let me rephrase. A Little Free Library is supposed to be a sort of take a book, leave a book. They're wooden structures, and there's filled with different books, normally donations. And people are allowed to take a book and bring it home, as well as just read it and put it back, as well as donate old books they have and may not want or may think could serve better the community. We currently have a Little Free Library located at Herrick Park near the place gate. And I was proposing to take that one down, build one there, as well as build a second one of the same design to put at the senior center. Now, I think that this would be good for the community because it would encourage people to read, as well as improve upon the structure that's already there, that's kind of fallen apart and-
We've lost, we've lost, we've lost again. I think you're frozen, in case you can hear us.
Five years ago.
Can you repeat that last couple of sentences?
You might, you might try to just, you know, as much as we'd like to see your smiling face, if you eliminate the video, your connection will probably work so that we can hear you.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, so so I want to build two Little Free Libraries in order to kind of spread disenjoyment for reading, as well as, you know, this is supposed to be a final project for scouts, it's supposed to be a help benefit the community in some way. And I think that the current structure up in Herrick Park needs a lot of improvement, and it needs to be more properly maintained. So as a part of this project, I want to collect old books.
You cut out after the sentence, "I want to collect old books." And we don't have you back.
Very, by replacing it with a new one and adding a children might drive by, visit regularly. So in doing this, I did want the Herrick, I wanted to put one of these at Herrick Park where there is currently library, as well as the senior center. This shouldn't require all too much work. Obviously, I need to make sure that the area is safe to be dug, but when it comes to installation, as well as creation of these two libraries, it's a very simple process. Minimal wood is needed. The whole project would probably cost only around $200 with fundraising that can easily be taken down. Obviously, we're looking for donations needed to scouts in the past. Simple materials, just be like wood and stuff like that. And what would we need to be for installation would be concrete. So I obviously want to make sure I have permission from the town to do such a thing and dig in these places. As I know, we've obviously already done that Herrick Park, but the senior center is a different story. We haven't put something there before. And I know there was also discussion of possibly adding a spot for cans to be dropped off alongside the library. I spoke with the person at the senior center about this as well. Just make it easier on the go to drop off these cans, rather than having to go in, inside and drop them off.
And-
All canned clean.
Donations will-
Yeah, so I guess I'm just kind of looking for like a, just to give general information and ask for permission to go forward with this, so that I can propose it to the council for our troop and sort of go forward with the planning process. I can share plans and stuff like that as well.
What is your, what is your required timeline? When do you become 18? When do, what are you planning on doing this?
I was planning on starting it maybe around like April. I turned 18 in July. I was hoping to have it finished by like June, probably. I don't think it would take very long. From what I saw, just like painting and stuff like that would probably take the most time, but installation, it would be maybe a weekend or two, just to put the two together and then install them.
Do you have plans already for such a structure, just pair of structures?
Yep, I have printed out plans. And I also, we worked on like a 3D model in order to, to see, the structure wouldn't be too drastically different than what it would, than what the current design is of just three walls and door. But the supplies are more important because I want to make sure that it lasts a little bit better than the other one did.
Thank you. We have a properties and facilities subcommittee that could also have the entity for you to report back to. We, as you probably know, we have a buildings and ground supervisor, but John Butromovich, and we have, of course, our town administrator, Jim Rupert, for you to work with. I'd like to go around and talk to the members of the Board of Selectmen and ask if they have any further questions. Bob DiPietro, do you have any questions for Will?
I just wondered, I've lived here over 30 years. I'm not aware of these distance of these boxes. I've seen them in these Harford, Forest Street, and Forest Street, but I'm wondering, how much use do they get?
So the question is, how much use do they get, Will?
Yep. So I don't think they get very much use, and that's part of the reason why I want to do this. In general, I think that Little Free Libraries do get a good amount of use if they're in a good location where people will see them and think, oh, hey, I can get a book. Though the current location of Herrick Park, obviously, it doesn't look very good. But when it comes to like summertime, if we actually have a good amount of books in there, because a lot of people sort of took the old children's books out and replaced them with their coffee table books they wanted to get rid of, I think that if we improve this okay. And if I, I'm working on a way to properly maintain them and like ensure the books are appropriate for children and stuff like that, that there is definitely be a rise in interest for stuff like this.
Thank you. Mike, Adam Keller will come to, in life, in person? Questions?
You're going to mic or me?
You, I'm sorry, Adam.
I, I, I'm going to just focus on the process of these requests. I don't think this is the appropriate way to spend the time of this board, and I think they should be directed first to the town administrator, who should refer them to the appropriate department to vet them, and then present us with a recommendation, yes or no, and not have the presentation be made at our, we've got seven adults here who are planning to present something. And we went to this first. I think the town has a lot more important things to do first. It's not that this isn't important or appropriate for us to do, but I'd like to stop doing it because we're, our meetings are long enough as they are.
Understood. Do you have any questions for the student? For the scout, rather? Mike Armita?
I, I feel kind of the same way Adam does. I'd rather come to us as a recommendation and be very quick, as opposed to a long process like this. But I don't have any problem with another one or two of these little free libraries popping up all over town.
Five more?
My question.
Very good. At this time, then I'll ask the, I have a motion that we send this to the town administrator for further action. Can I have a motion, Adam?
Move that we establish a process where requests for student projects, we refer to the town administrator first and refer them to the appropriate town departments for recommendation and be presented only with the recommendation of the administrator and the, and the appropriate-
We have a motion before us, and we have a second by Bob DiPietro. Any further comments on that particular motion?
Nope.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 It looks like it is unanimous. So there's no opposition. Now, can I have a second motion? Because Will has to move on with his project. Can I have a motion for, on Will's project?
Right to the town administrator.
Right.
And we have a second by Mr. Armita?
If it's referring, yeah, I, I didn't catch it all, but if it's to refer it to the town administrator, I second it.
Thank you.
That's the motion.
Any further comments? Then I will call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Will, you'll be, please call Mr. Rupert, and you can proceed with your project through, through his office. Thank you, sir, for bringing that forward. Do we have Alexandra Miller-Daby on the line? Not, yeah, okay, very good. Then we'll continue, we'll go back to our-
That was an update from me, not from hers.
Okay, very good. So at this point, we had, we go back to number three. We have Patrice, I'm sorry. Patrice Carson, is she with us?
Yes.
Oh, okay, very good. She's in here by name?
We, we've asked her to join you tonight to give you an update on the four town group and present their budget. They have a budget request for this upcoming fiscal year.
Patrice?
Good evening. I'm assuming you can hear me, and if you can't, you'll let me know. I have with me tonight in the little Hollywood Squares, Eric Trot from the Town of Coventry, who is a member of the Once Four Town Steering Committee. Now, we are officially known as Connecticut's Countryside Steering Committee. And also with me tonight in the squares is Josh Hull. He's our intern, who's been working on this project since August or September. And they're here to, to help me back up, answer any questions, or we'll go from there. I can give you a quick sort of rundown, if you let me share the screen. I think I can do that automatically.
You should be able to, yes.
Okay.
Please be concise in your comments tonight, just because we have a very long agenda.
Oh, sure. I can move right to the budget if you'd prefer.
When, when we brought this up the last time, the board had a lot of questions, and I thought it would be really great to bring the, the Connecticut's Countryside group before you, so that you can ask questions of them directly. This is the group that's responsible for the day-to-day work that happens by Connecticut's Countryside.
I'd like to hear the little, short presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'll share the screen. Basically, Connecticut's Countryside, we were established just before COVID. Our four-town plan came out and COVID hit, so we've been doing a lot of this remotely. And when we can, in person. The Four-Town Action Plan for Economic Vitality was created. This is a, a regional economic development plan, if you will, for the four towns of Bolton, Coventry, Mansfield, and Tallinn. And this has been a regional cooperation with the four towns since the beginning. There's a steering committee that's been established. We meet monthly. The steering committee consists of three members of each town, and then there are other various members from chambers of commerce, from UConn, from Nichols College, from, from different places. Where we allow whoever wants to come to our meetings to come and listen. All of our information is up on every town's website in a special four-town area, if you want to go there and look at agendas or minutes or anything else we've done. And, and that is thanks to Josh, that was one of his interim projects when he came to us to get all that up on the different websites. We have built new partnerships, as you can see here. The Cultural Coalition, Coventry Arts Guild, UConn, the chambers. This is part of the pillar, part of the things to do list, if you will, in the plan that was formed. We've got some subcommittees formed. Josh has gotten some information up on Connecticut or CT Trail Finder, or, and I think he's still working on some of that, but if, this would be for trails and things in all of the four towns, in the hopes to address some of the recreational items that are in the plan. We have, like I said earlier, before, we've established some municipal website pages, and we're going to try now, as part of the plan, to establish our own page. We have been very thankful to have Tim Liptrap, who lives in Coventry and works at Nichols College, has offered his student class this year, or this semester, to actually form a website for our region. So he's doing this for free with the students, so the students will learn, and, and we will get a website out of it. He approached us first to sort of get an idea of what types of websites we were looking for, so we'll, we'll be working with him as he moves forward through that project this semester. We hired DKA Marketing, who was a consultant to create a regional brand and, and for the four towns and a marketing plan and regional brochure. They are almost finished with their work. We have a draft regional brochure in hand. And that regional brochure will be used for marketing purposes. You'll see it at the Big E, you'll see it in places around town, in the different businesses, and the hopes, you'll see it on CT website, but the hope is that it will help attract visitors to our area to spend their money, to take part in our recreational areas, to maybe decide that they like this area and move here, or bring their business here. But it's all about the, the region and the area and working together. As I said, we hired Josh, who is our UConn, UConn MPA, and this is part of a internship program that UConn runs, that several of the towns have taken part in almost yearly. We've got our new logo and branding, which you can see in the top corner of the page here. This is just the, the logo piece, but the entire page, I'll go back to the beginning here. This is what the, the whole thing looks like. So it has the four towns listed, and then our motto, if you will, and this is, this would be the the branding logo. That was done through a survey of all four towns, and quite a few participants took part in that. Coming up, we have some events planned. We just did a follow-up summit. At the beginning of this process, we had a summit where I invited all stakeholders from the four towns, manly business people and other people who were involved with the, the six pillars in the plan. The six pillars are marketing, education, recreation. And I know I'm missing the other three, but we had about, I think it was 70-something participants the first time. We had almost 60 a week ago, Monday, who came to sort of listen to a follow-up of where we've been, what we've been doing, and sort of form groups in the pillars to see if we can get some people to partner with, who will help continue in our, in the plan's work. We have a joint Earth Day planned coming up in April for the four towns. We're trying to tie, yes?
How you doing?
Hello?
You're hungry?
Okay. The, the events will go on in the four towns, and, and we're trying to tie them all together, so that people can do something in each town, and possibly have something at the end of that. I talked about the website. We have the new brochure, and that's, that's basically where we are with regard to where we, who we are and where we've been. So as we progress through this process, I don't know, Eric and Josh, do you have anything to add there? It's pretty, pretty good sum up.
No, that's great, Patrice. I think you covered it really well. Josh's notes were very comprehensive, kind of giving the lowdown on all the activities that we've accomplished over the last year and a half, two years.
Thanks.
Now, the tough part. How much is this going to cost?
Well, you should have received our budget request memo. I will put it up on the screen here. Like I said, we've been working toward doing what we can for little to nothing. The towns, I think, so far have put in money for the intern, which was part of the internship program, which was already funded. And then we put in 5,000 each for, no, it wasn't that much. It was less than that for the, for DKA, for the, the marketing and the brochure.
Could be in your package.
We are, we are looking at, one of the items was the website. The website was a $20,000 item, which is now being taken care of at no cost to us. So we are now looking for 5,000 from each town for next fiscal year. And the request is for projects that are outlined in the plan and to continue on the plan's work. So I will get right to the budget. The list of projects are part of the maintenance of the website, social, social media outlet, and the SEO costs for that, and the cost for each town breaks down here, which is 37.50 for the maintenance, 12.50 for the SEO, 5,000 apiece. If we can do this cheaper, we will, but these are the costs that we have at this point. We'll obviously try to see if we can't do this cheaper, but this is what we have for the budget request at this point. I don't know if you want me to talk about anything else that we might be looking for in the future, but there are, the plan is full of things to do, ideas that we want to continue to do, and as committees are formed, we're hoping that the committees will take over some of the work. And we're also talking about maybe this becoming its own 501(c)(3) at some point, where it can have a life of its own, and then be guided through the towns.
How do you handle the money, Patrice?
Um, at this point, what we have done is, we are basically the, it's approved, it, the money goes to, through Coventry. And so any bills we've been paying, they have been doing that for us as one. So each town would commit, send, send money to Coventry, and their finance department has graciously accepted that duty.
So are you going to divide this equally by four, or are you going to do it by population, the, the request for finance, financial support?
The first, this request is, is equal. We have had some discussion about the fact that, you know, some towns are larger than others. Although at this point, we don't see where this wouldn't benefit the towns, or what we're looking at wouldn't benefit the towns equally. There may be projects in the future that would have to be budgeted that may benefit, you know, by population. But at this point, we hadn't thought to do that for this.
And one last question, as, of interest, how you would handle a project. Bolton is going to have a 300 plus three reenactment at the Heritage Farm this coming October. How would this group help us with that particular project?
Well, I mean, it, it would, it might depend on when it was happening. If it happened to be happening at times where there's other events, it could be co-advertised. I would assume by then, we'll have our, our Four-Town Connecticut's Countryside website up and running. It could be advertised on, on that website, as well as through social media, as part of one of the things going on in town. Anything else from my two, yeah, sure.
I first, I just want to say thank you so much for having us tonight. Appreciate being here to be able to chat about Connecticut's Countryside. A lot of what we would be doing is about visibility, marketing, and the leveraging that we do by being able to share in the effort essentially of getting the word out about events such like this, utilizing our community calendar, utilizing our search engine optimization with our social media platform and website. It really launches the opportunities that are maybe smaller in the, in the town. Small events could be parks and recreation or conservation, but it brings it to a higher level and a higher visibility because we're connecting with so many regional partners, Last Green Valley, University of Connecticut. So what that ends up being, having happen is you bring more people to these events, you create more notice and visibility. And I think we've talked about opportunities to table at these events, so people will get to know about the work we're doing. They have, again, further visibility about Connecticut's Countryside, and that causing people to come back the next time they come to Bolton, and they see something they would like to come back and visit for when they come to Heritage Farm. So it really opens up a lot of doors of connectivity and visibility for efforts such as this.
Thank you. Questions from the other board members? Bob DiPietro?
Yes, I'm just wondering, before we commit funds or support this program, what about the other three towns? Are there any, you know, contingencies?
Are there any contingencies from the other three towns?
So Bob, Bob, if I might answer that question, and certainly the others can jump in, as part of the budget preparation process, the core group invited, you know, town manager- you know, town managers to a meeting to discuss this. Um, the comment from Mansfield was that they were prepared to um, put in a, a robust amount of money. My comment was, well, I don't know what's robust for Mansfield, but what's robust for Mansfield and what's robust for Bolton are probably two very different things. So it sounds like Mansfield is certainly committed to being able to put uh, you know, the five thousand dollars of funding in for the projects the group has on tap for this upcoming year. Uh, the town of Coventry Town Administrator did attend. And his comment was, well, you know, we'll, we'll include it in the budget, but you know, we're not sure if it'll survive the budget process. And, and I think we're in that same boat as Coventry. But you know, we'll include it in the budget discussions for the Board of Selectmen as they deliberate and consider their budget uh, as they build it to go to the board finance. But I, I don't think at this point in time, you're in a position to guarantee funding or not guarantee funding.
Thank you.
Mr. Amita has a question.
Yeah, uh, what, what line item or what budget would we be putting this in?
This would be a, this is a new request that we've not seen before. Um, and so we, we were gonna put it in your budget package as a standalone item to be discussed.
Okay, so we don't have any place for it in any department or anything yet?
That, that's accurate.
Okay.
And we can have discussions with Jill about how it fits into UCOA. And you know, whether it's a standalone department or board or whether it's included in some other department budget.
Okay.
Thank you. Bob Moore, any questions? Adam Taylor?
Very good. Um, is the, is the function of this four-town collaborative, is it, is it primarily to um, be outreach and publicity and um, raise awareness of things that are already going on in these towns? Or is it also going to be a generator of new events or new, new things? Like Bolton doesn't really have an active farmer's market. Is that something that this group would be doing or be, be involved in? Or is it just that there was one?
I, I think it's a little of both, Adam. I think it's certainly to raise awareness of the things that do go on in town. And then I think it is also to um, look at what else is out there. And if there are things that the town wants to try and do, that we would be there to support that. Um, we've talked about a farmer's market day. Where all four towns would hold their farmer's market on a certain day and so people could go to, or maybe a weekend, so people could go to all four. Um, the
Or maybe
The Earth, the Earth Day Summit, I guess is a good, uh, the Earth Day event is actually a very good example of this. It's things that are happening. Um, but Josh has, has gone around and, and met with uh, some of the people who are interested. Um, and so there are some new events created and some events that are gonna get tied together. And maybe not just tied together in Bolton, but tied together from Bolton to Coventry to Talon to Mansfield. So that people will take part in, in things in the whole region. Um, so it's, it's sort of a little bit of both, I would say. Um, but it is, visibility is key and I think it's also to, to drive, you know, marketing of the area and the region and to retain, hopefully retain some business. Uh, help some of the businesses and their connections, help farming, help agriculture, help recreation. It's, it's sort of a boost to all of that.
Thank you. I, is it, you'll say?
I, I, I get the idea. It seems like most useful as a megaphone rather than as a generator because that amount of money isn't going to generate a lot of new activity.
Is there a thought from the group of seeking other funds other than town funds?
Yes, yes, we have been um, looking for and have been um, you know, shown some grant opportunities. And where those are possible, you know, we will do that sort of thing. I believe the plan was done with a matching grant um, to begin with. And um, so there's that. Some of those require matches and so may not be possible and some um, don't. So it just, or, or the matches in kind as opposed to, to fee. So yeah, we are looking at, at other funding sources. And as a regional group, it's actually um, beneficial to be applying for these kind of things. Um, as a group of four instead of a, a, just a single town for a lot of this. And, and the chambers have been helping with that, um, helping us identify some of that.
Adam?
Well, are you partnering at all with the Heritage Farm Commission about their plan and with um, maybe also with the land trust for their events?
We, we haven't gotten that far yet. I know the land trust is part of the Earth Day. So yes, for the, for the land trust, I don't know about Heritage Farm, but basically um, our partners, Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, for Earth Day in, in Bolton anyway, are the Conservation Commission, Bike Walk Bolton and the Land Trust are the ones who basically said they would help with the events or be part of it.
Do you have, is it gonna be considered the executive director of this? Is it going to be just the, the four um, town planners that are the co- uh, chairman of it? How is this going to work structurally?
The, how is, what going to work?
The structure of to ongoing activities and work by the commission, by the four-town?
Oh, okay. Basically as it, I would say as it is now, the, the, the core group, the core four, a, as we are known. Um, with Josh, it's the core five, but we basically meet and discuss the, the meeting ahead. Um, then we meet with the steering committee. The following week, the steering committee, like I said, is, is representative. There's, there's three members from each town on the committee. Uh, in addition to other members, but things are discussed there, plans are discussed there. That's where we draw uh, from people to help in some of the events, um, help us find grants, that sort of thing. I don't know if that answers your question. But there isn't, there isn't as of right now anyway, one executive to this. I would say it's, it's probably the four of us that have been sort of doing it in tandem together. And we're just following the plan. The plan was, was made up, accepted by the four towns and, and we're just trying to follow the plan and do the things that are in the plan set forth. Eric? Oops, sorry.
Eric, turn.
I, we do have a memorandum of understanding that we created at the very beginning, the onset of this, which kind of outlines the, the structure to start off with. Um, it identifies staffs such as Patrice and myself, the planners. I think there's actually secondary individuals. We have uh, our market master Erica Taglioco as another standing person with system to kind of broaden the scope of who would be facilitating the structure. The goal ultimately, um, according to our plan is to look towards a, a separate municipal, perhaps nonprofit or municipal development corporation that would incorporate a board of directors. The model of the Connecticut Main Street Program, uh, which we're, Coventry's a member of that, has a structure where you have a board of directors, a number to be determined. And then you have subcommittees that serve as the advisors or the focal groups on particular pillars, like we have the six for the, the Connecticut's countryside. And so at some point, as we continue this effort here, looking at something more of an established structure that would not be just town staff, but also could contribute, is to have an entity that would facilitate that. Um, and be more aligned with the Pampers you're suggesting for the board of directors approach.
Thank you. And further, for the questions from the board? Uh, at this time, then I would ask for a motion to consider putting five thousand dollars into discussion for the budget.
Is it being presented? I mean, had, before, had it been presented to us as?
Yeah, it was supposed to be in your package. I'm not sure how it didn't get in here.
Okay.
Um, so, so it, it, it'll be in your, in your overall bu- budget package.
Well, we don't need a motion.
No, because it was being included for discussion.
My
Going to include it as a line item for now and carry it to the budget process.
If there's consensus with the board. Is there anyone who, who opposes? Very good. Then thank you very much. And it was a very nice meeting that you held that we could go Monday. Uh, we had, uh, if I, my memory serves me right, I went, Dick Treat went, uh, Selectman Bud DePietro went, Leah Dean was there. Uh, Milt and Rosemary Hathaway and I'm probably
Gary Bergeron.
Thank you, Gary. He's, yep, as a Bolton business.
Yep. Now, the dean, the deans, three deans were supposed to be there and I think somebody got sick, but they did send a representative um, from Dean Cabinet Tree.
Leah.
There was, yeah, yeah.
Very good. Thank you very much and thank you all for your time this evening and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, we're on four B. Ray Hardy is with us this evening. Um, we have had discussions with the DOT regarding the interchange at three eighty-four, six and forty-four. And there has been much discussion back and forth with them and with some members uh, of the town staff and um, with um, uh, myself and others. Uh, and one of the things I found in their view of the Bolton notch was an absence of understanding of the Native American significant that Bolton notch plays in our history. And in our sensitivity to our history and our Native American past. Um, I had, reached out to Ray Hardy and um, have asked him to look into how do we move forward to bring the knowledge to the DOT? What knowledge do we bring and who is the right person to bring that knowledge to them? And what is the, the resource? Ray, would you like to?
Okay. It's just a, it's just a kind of a two, two parts to
Do you wanna come and sit at the table? Ray, this is our owl that visits with us. Uh, I know you're very familiar with owls and this one is um, our closest inside feather friend. Uh, so you speak to that and that's what uh, the circles are, the camera.
Okay.
And it is our
If you, Ray, if you just look at me when you're talking, everybody will see your shining face. If you, if you look at me, uh, everybody will see your face instead of the side of your face.
You're good. I can do that. Uh, this is a quick catch-up perhaps on the history of uh, Squaw Cave. But what I'm basically asking is, is uh, like to, I'd like the town to consider uh, applying for a request, applying for uh, a request for protection as a significant uh, historical site, Connecticut. This is just city Connecticut. And uh, as far as the history is concerned, we have uh, Hazte Paul in his first book uh, gives a section, several paragraphs dealing with uh, the woman uh, the woman Nita was Podo and she lived uh, in East Hartford, basically in that area where the, where their main village was. This is in the sixteen thirties for us. And she married, she married a Dutchman. Dutch were very active along the river at that time. Uh, trading furs. Uh, the English had just arrived and, and hadn't really made too much of an appearance in this area yet. At that time, sixteen thirty-four is when they, uh, what Hans Hazte Paul mentions is, as to when the Dutch Peter Hager met uh, one of the Nita and that's Connecticut's first love story is how that unfolded. Uh, he has a nice, a brief uh, kind of a bridged story about how uh, their, their adventures here in Bolton, particularly Squaw Cave. Squaw is uh, the Algonquin word for woman. And that refers to one Nita, this one in question for that. And most of that, most of that material that he had in this book uh, was found in uh, Mathias Spies back in the thirties published uh, The Story of One Nita. And that's, that's pretty much her story along with Peter Hager who from, from the original uh, contact with the, with the uh, with the Dutch who were dead. That of being a uh, a, a domestic servant in uh, her family in Windsor. And that's where she died, sixteen seventy-four, I think is when she died. So anyway, that's the history. That was, Squaw Cave is their last residence. And it's kind of a complicated story. They were on the run from the law. And if you read the story, it's, well, you know, you're certainly on their side. Uh, you know, they, they were justified in what they were doing and, and uh, so they were on the lam. They, they, they stayed for a while in uh, in the uh, East Hartford Village. And uh, it stayed for a while in uh, Center Springs. I, I've visited all these sites, so I had kind of a rough feel for what they were contending with. But of course, Center Springs wasn't the home for homeless people at that time and drug dealers. It was a pretty nice area at that time. It's still a beautiful area now. I mean, it's got beautiful waterfalls, you know, they're, they're rich with eels and, and a lot of variety of foods. Foodstuffs available here. They said came to drink on the, on the stream on a regular basis. So they had plenty of food. And they, you know, at that time, that was overlapping with them when the English were starting to come in. There were more and more Europeans poking their nose around, looking for places to settle. And so they packed up and moved to Squaw Cave. Squaw Cave was their last residence. That was where Peter, Peter was shot by uh, by uh, body hunters. And he crawled into the cave. And one Nita was out picking blueberries on the hill across the way when it pouring. And she, she heard the shots. He came over, ran to the cave. The uh, the Europeans, the two body hunters were not particularly interested in walking into a dark cave, not knowing what was in there. So they let some time pass and they finally would enter the woods there apparently at that time and uh, actually uh, uh, well, Larry Convers said his mother used to be able to go all the way through off the other side. So, so apparently it came in and there was an, there was an exit apparently on the other side. So it's really kind of a very interesting uh, uh, early, early story, pre uh, well, I should say a colonial story that's very much a part of Bolton. And again, it's, it's uh, it's uh, Bolton, Bolton and Connecticut's first love story as far as we know.
Could you just also address the um, winter solstice connection?
That's the other, that's the other part. This is the historic aspect of this, the significance of this, of this site. Uh, the other, other is what I passed out to you. Uh, I've worked very closely with the uh, the Living Antiquities Research Association. Uh, and they specialize in, in uh, surveying, documenting uh, uh, Native Americans. It's a new term now, new in the sense that it's probably, probably was uh, on paper, two thousand and seven, something like that. Uh, ceremonial stone landscape. Now it's a thing now. And what we used to, used to go through the woods and we see stone walls on the way. Well, all of a sudden we've got research saying, well, wait a minute, wait a minute. Some, some issue with this particular structure because it's not something that a farmer would build. A particular, particular ceremonial stone landscape is erratic or older. A pile of stones on top, but it's called generally in English called a carton. Uh, stones, there's a head and four legs as a turtle. Farmers back then really didn't have a whole lot of leisure time to create uh, rock art. And I mean, the native peoples that are still around uh, kept quiet about this for a long time because they didn't want to get any interference. But the cut, finding now that, that these sites really need to be preserved because more and more development roads and, and uh, housing projects going in, they want to make sure they protect sites. And the turtle is one, is one example of something that really is a indicator of definitely Native American culture. Serpents, generally coming from the water, uh, water source off the spring. And they're building stone walls and a serpent feed from up in the street ballroom yet. And so those two, those two features are very distinguishing uh, uh, types of, types of ceremonial stone landscapes. There are other, other uh, structures, simply a boulder with pile of stones at the time, especially if it's a series of the, the uh, the Historical Preservation Officer of uh, the, says the correct term is uh, Manotu Hasnach, which means stone prayers. And so often, and it's documented in the, in the sort of primary sources back in the fifteen, sixteen hundreds where native peoples would carry stones and offer those as prayers. So they'd be coming by and they go, I think there's something happened at this particular site, so they would add a stone. And some of the sites that I've seen in southern New England especially, these are huge. And, and so we're talking about a lot, a lot of years.
Could you describe then the, a Bolton notch?
And then, so what we have in Bolton notch is kind of a, I And then, so what we have in Bolton notch is kind of a, I, I've been in communication with the state archaeologist, Sarah Sportman. As the state archaeologist approached her, I've worked closely with on a regular basis, I've worked closely with the tribal historic conservation officer, Jay Levy with the Mohegans. He's been to the site. I've shown him other sites around. We have, we have several stone landscape sites. Everywhere. We've got some significant ones here, Bolton, Manchester, Glastbury, that I'm familiar with. Most of these don't have, we don't have to worry about their, they're on either private land or they're on protected land. So we don't really have to worry about it and we'll publicize it. But anyway, so we're looking at, we're looking at Squaw Cave. On the first page, that, if you can see what's going on with that, that's, that's the front view, the left, on the left of large opening, that's the entrance to the cave. To the right of that, there's a smaller crevice that goes in. That doesn't, that doesn't go into the cave. So and on, on winter solstice, winter solstice is important to native peoples. That's a very, very important holiday. A lot of stone features is this kind, it's, it's not really a new discipline, but it's new to the east coast, what they call archeology. And what that means is basically, look at the stones and is there alignment with celestial events? Is, does it, does it, does it align with a particular solar event, a particular constellation, perhaps a setting at a particular time? You know, just mark these out. And money is, that's what they're using. All the features either, either existing, as in the case of Squaw Cave, or they constructed things are important, it's a thing that's, that mostly has to do with often built large stone structures, aligned, always on the right of the site. Now you have two, two points. You have viewers, viewer here, a stone structure here, or maybe it's a landscape feature, maybe it's a notch in the mound. And they have a marker where the person stands. And if they either clear these sets, they want to clear these sets, that's to be any playing season. Winter solstice, if it's sunset, that pick a time, that's, that's the shortest day of the year. There's a lot of, lots of spiritual belief wrapped around that whole period of time. Anyway, so we're looking at, in the, in the main, on that main opening to the cave, there is a platform that's at sea height. And it's kind of hard to tell in this image. And that crevice to the, to the right of it is also a platform, smaller. There's also a platform there. Same height on both those. And and I don't believe too much in coincidence that somebody did this. And, and I believe that the, the Mohegan Tribal Historic Preservation Officer agrees. Now, on winter solstice, when that sun comes down, this is, that's what's lit up. Those, those seats are lit up by the sun, and it's coming down. And on the second page, if we're, if we're looking from the, if we're looking from the smaller crevice, which is more a better example, what you, your, your position, when you sit in that seat, you are positioned to face the correct direction. You sit all the way back, it automatically positions your face in a bigger direction. And by doing so, winter solstice, you see here what's happening. This is just, just a few minutes prior to sunset, when I took this photo. What it does, it comes, it pretty much follows the ridge down. And then it sets right in that that intersection of the horizon and the smoke in the hill. Very precisely. And then, as the days go, go by, and the sun starts moving further north as it sets. That, by bit, by bit. There are a couple of, a couple of boats here that I'm curious about. And so I'm going to go back there on, on Echo Labs and Summer Solstice, see if those in fact have anything to do with that, with those events. So that's a cultural, that's a process there. And we, we, there's a little bit of a, it's not really a speedboat so much, but it's kind of a little kind of a little waiting period. I, I spoke with the, with, with Sarah Sportman, the state archaeologist. And she was very interested in this. She spoke with the, the Connecticut State Historic Preservation Office. And they had quite a lengthy conversation, trying to work out where does, where does Squaw Cave fit into the categories they already have? They have historical buildings, they have the stone structures that I've mentioned, and they have archaeological sites. Well, at this point, Squaw Cave does not fit very precisely into any of those. So what they're working on right now, as we speak, what they're working on right now is this, this, it's more than just Squaw Cave, there are a lot of other sites around that are kind of in that, in that gray area as to how do we plug this in? And there's more and more interest in, in protecting and preserving Native American sites and so forth. So there's some impetus behind this because of that. So we're in, we're in, we're in kind of a process of, of phase right now where they're working on it. So what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that, you know, what I would prefer is if the town I would say the step would be to go through, through Sarah Sportman, which is state archaeologist. And, and work with her, if you're going to be, because that's, that's basically, essentially what that is, is coming from the cultural end of it. It's coming from the Native American perspective. But at the historic end, this is, that's kind of a given. It's a matter of the state historic preservation officers saying, yeah, okay, fine, check that off. And then, okay, I'll work your category.
You think it, if a letter from the Board of Selectmen is the appropriate next step?
I, I would say so because I've already, I've already brought their attention to this, they're working on it. So I think it would be big help, you know, from the Board of Selectmen, a letter to them saying, okay, well, there's more, more interest in this than just one individual calling up. I mean, they took it, what I'm saying, they took it very seriously because this is a hot subject right now, you know, Native American cultural structures. So, so yeah, I think that would be a big help, just a letter, Sarah.
She's been here, we've, we've had discussions with her because of the farm. So we do know.
Yeah. So yeah.
Thank you. Board members' questions for, for Ray Hardy? So Peter's shaking his head no. Mike Armita? Adam?
Oh, good. Great explanation. I've liked that, been in there, never, I never even noticed.
Yeah, well, I was kind of, you get to them ahead of time. But I walked in there and I said, notice he faced me in a particular direction, I told the public. Say, well, that's two hundred and forty degrees, you're at that hill, that's where the result is sunset. And, and I, I had a background with, working with this because different sites is a beautiful, amazing site right here, Bolton. That is, the native, native peoples had used it for years. Kind of under, under the radar. Beautiful, beautiful winter solstice, something. This is, this would be a classic ceremonial stone landscape. What it is, is a huge boulder, flat on top, straight sides, kind of a prow, like a ship in front and a prow on the backside.
Where is it located?
Point two. You know, the rooftop of Point Two. But, you know, John, well, it's actually, it's actually on John Fisher's property, just over the line. And what a solstice, I say thing, I walked up there and say, well, that's, that's kind of what you do, that's a pedestal, pedestal stone. Big boulder, underneath is a stone, it's resting on. And this is only conjecture, but I think what happened is that, big underneath, place is stone, try to balance it. They put that big boulder around any which way they want. So I went up there and I said, okay, there's something was telling me something because the point, and the point, same thing, pulled out my compass, it was twenty-four degrees. So has the photographs of, of that, it's a separate, separate issue, but has photographs of that. But the sun sets on the solstice. That prow is lit up, only on the prow, not the sides. And, and if you go around to the other side, at that point, stand at the point, and aim through, again, as I mentioned, a lot of these are aiming devices. Aim through, watch the sun drop right there, the direction to that, you can say.
Thank you very much. Very, very deeply appreciated.
And Armita has his hand up.
Mike Armita?
Yes, I do. When you brought up this discussion, you, you titled it, "Discussion About the Intersection of Three Eighty-Four and Route Six." And I was expecting something different because I had brought up something a month, last month, and we were supposed to have it on this month's agenda. So I thought you were going to speak about something that I brought up, which was the prohibition of using notch road to access that side of town with town vehicles. And since you made the comment that it was a discussion of that intersection, I'd like to discuss that now if we could.
Do I have a consensus from the board to bring that into the discussion?
There's some reason it's germane to this discussion. It doesn't seem like it is.
It isn't germane to Mr. Hardy's discussion, but Pam titled the discussion, "A Discussion of the Intersection of Route Six and Three Eighty-Four." It's germane to that.
Mike, that was, that was just meant to be an introductions for our visitors and guests as to why Mr. Hardy was before us, was because
That's cool, but you brought the subject up and I'd like to talk about it. And it was supposed to be on this month's agenda because I brought it up last month and they, I was told that it would come up this month. That's why when you said it, I assumed that's what we were doing.
Do I have consensus from the board to?
Well, if, if I may, if, if we could let these folks get their presentation and bring it further down on, on our agenda, I think.
As long, as long as it doesn't go another month without a full discussion.
And I'm just saying, if, if we can bring it down lower somewhere in this agenda, under, under properties.
Put it under
properties and facilities or something like that.
Maybe two, two or three spots that we can add it to, Mike?
Okay, I'd like to discuss it tonight.
And it should be done with a motion.
What, to move it?
Let's see. Where would be appropriate administrative officer's report since it was raised at a prior meeting?
Under ten.
I'll make a motion, we, we bring that item up for discussion under item ten.
I'll second it.
We have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on. Thank you for that understanding, Mike. I'd like to skip down then to five, ongoing business D, the Diversity Commission. And our thanks for your patience this evening. Would you like to come to the table?
I didn't load the presentation on the computer. I was, I was not prepared for that.
You can't go to the town.
We did, we did get
We did have it.
An email copy.
They've all received it and they received the, they received the
This is, this is the one with the students, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the final
If you want to log in and share, if you have it on your, on your laptop.
We're going to take a two-minute recess.
Right there on the wall.
Right in.
Ball lowercase, Tom Hall, I can guess.
Restricted. All lowercase. Did you find the link or you mean to find the link?
Well, listen to it on the town website, under our agenda.
The, the, the link is not.
Yeah. So couldn't you just go put that up on, from the website directly? You just open it on your, on your, and share it, Jim. Just open from the website and share it.
Which, which one are we talking? The, the initial packet or the Bolton students or the diversity presentation? In our three
You're coming up.
The third one.
There's so much that's on with those type of skills. I still be trying to get on, but I won't find you.
Thank you, Amanda. That was helpful.
Meeting back to order.
Alrighty. So thanks for having me back again as the Chair of the Ad-Hoc Diversity Commission. I will, in the interest of being brief, try to skip off some of the stuff that I've already shared with you guys about the commission and, and the surveys that we put out. But for the public, who may want to see it, the full presentation, as well as the full report, will be posted on the website under the Diversity Commission.
I would like to say at the very beginning of this, this is an extremely professional document. And it has been carefully vetted by multiple members of the commission and had a lot of interaction and responses from the public as well. And so I'd like to say that this is something that I think would cost a significant amount of money if we had gone out to hire to do it. So we're very blessed to have a commission that worked this hard on it. And I'd just like to say thank you very much.
And donated your time. We appreciate that.
Yeah, it took a lot of effort, but everybody contributed. So it was a good process. So this is specifically about the student survey. We previously presented on the adult survey. So for this survey, we got forty-six responses. And that actually, looking at our data, represents a thirteen point one percent response rate because of our, looking at the student population from grade seven through transition age. So we did see that females were overrepresented in the survey responses and gender non-binary individuals were also overrepresented. However, we know that the gender non-binary data is wrong because it says that we have zero of them in our school system. And obviously, people identified as such in our survey. So these are just some look at the demographics that we got in the responses. So mostly grades eleven through twelve, but we did get a decent amount of ninth, tenth, seventh, and eighth graders. So no, nothing was overwhelmingly taking over the survey. Mostly in terms of race, white individuals, but we did get three folks who identified as multiracial, or who identified as Latino or Hispanic. And two who identified as African-American or black, and one Asian. And then we did have a couple that we couldn't identify because they chose not to identify. And then your gender, which I already briefly went over. So this is specifically with regards to one of the responses to the questions on the survey. So the question was, how do you feel about this statement? I believe that Bolton schools are diverse. And so we saw that slightly more of the respondents disagreed when you combined the strongly disagree and the disagree than those that agreed or strongly agreed with the statement. But you can tell the, the population was split in terms of how they felt about this question, which is similar to what we saw for the adult survey as well. So this question was about understanding. So how well do people at your school understand you as a person? So for this question, that it was Uh, so for this question, that it was largely positive, right? So, um, the majority felt that they were somewhat understood or quite well or extremely understood. Whereas, um, not too many felt not at all, which is, is decent. But again, very, very split responses to these questions. So nothing super overwhelming majority is that we may have expected to see or hope to see or, or anything. So it made analysis a bit challenging because, uh, the answers were a bit all over the place. Um, I should say, uh, that this, this survey did go out via email to this, um, from the superintendent to, and email was not distributed in the school system to all the students. So that's why the, the responses were so low. It was also shared on social media. And, um, you know, a lot of the adults who may have taken the adult survey could have shared it with children if, if they had this with their school age children. So that's where the response came from. Um, so another question we asked is how connected do you feel to the adults at your school? Um, so, again, less people felt extremely connected or quite connected than those who did not feel connected or felt somewhat connected. So slightly more negative responses than we might hope to see, but nothing overwhelming again on this question. Uh, so then, like we did with the adult survey, we tried to do a, an analysis by grouping individuals. And so we only, um, because we only, we asked fewer questions in terms of demographics than how the children identified. Then we did the other adults, we only picked three different group identities. Look at, so we looked at grade level and we split them into seventh and eighth grade and then ninth through tenth and, sorry, ninth through twelve and then transitioned age. So we looked at those three groups separately. We looked at race and ethnicity. And for that, we did a simple white or BIPOC. BIPOC means, um, black indigenous people of color. Um, so that was anybody who identified as anything other than just white. Uh, and then we also looked at gender identity, looking at male, female and non-binary. So those are the three groups we were able to look at. And when we looked at that, these are some of the results that we saw. So females had less favorable responses than the average respondent. Um, and then non-binary individuals were more likely to spend time inside and outside of school with folks who are different than them. Bearing in mind that there are only three non-binary individuals who responded to the survey, right? So when your N is small is the last valid conclusion, um, than the ones that have larger, larger populations that we're looking at, but that's what the data was showing us. Um, in terms of race and ethnicity, we saw that BIPOC students responded mostly more favorably than the average respondent, except on questions about being connected to adults at the school and whether or not, um, they felt that people with differing identities are treated fairly in, in the school system. And then when it related to gender identity, some of the differences we saw by group population were that high schoolers responded less favorably than middle schoolers to questions and that middle schoolers were less likely to spend time with people of differing identities inside and outside of school. Um. So then, taking that, those kind of analyses into consideration, we identified some findings of, based on the results of the survey. Uh, so overall, the responses seemed to indicate that as a whole Bolton Public School System is doing well in terms of being welcoming and respectful to most of the student body. So that, that's great. That's what we, you know, had hoped to find, that people felt welcomed and respected in the school system. Um, as I already mentioned, another finding was that there's a lack of consensus on whether respondents felt that BPS school systems are diverse. However, we did see that slightly more respondents indicated that it is, they feel that it is not diverse. Um, respondents were also split about whether or not they would recommend the school system. That was one of the questions that we asked. Uh, many comments centered around the size of the school, um, with some seeing it as a benefit, and others seeing it as a drawback to being able to find a group of people that they could fit in with at school. So it had both positive and negative reactions to it. Um, in terms of gender and LGBTQIA, which stands for lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, questioning, intersex, ooh, and sexual, plus a bunch of other identities.
Is that the plus symbol?
Plus is all the other things, yes. Plus, all the other things that are not, uh, um, included in those letters. Um, those identities were raised as reasons that some students felt that there's unequal or mistreatment within the school system. So we saw that in a couple of narrative responses, um, to the questions. Nothing overwhelming, um, but those were things that were raised by some of the students in, in their responses. And one of the other findings, which is not really a finding of the survey itself, but in the analysis of the survey, um, we did found that the student body is twenty percent racially or ethnically diverse, while the staff and teachers are only one percent, um, racially or ethnically diverse, which may not shock anybody's. Um, but you, you can see that disparity there between the student body and the staff at the schools.
But that does not take into consideration the elementary level, correct?
Correct. I was, ooh, I think I did the whole. Yeah, so the students are just the seventh through twelve graders, but the staffing was the whole staff. So I don't think I have to be.
A quick question, as I read, I, I read, read over it and, uh, and one of the things, but the graphs are pretty easy to, to interpret and so on and so forth. There was a lot of comments in, in reading and through those comments. And, and where I was looking to see is, um, were, were, were these comments like, uh, multiple comments for one or two people or all the, was it forty, forty-some odd people had comments or?
So each.
It almost looked like, reading to, almost looked like a part of what, part of it was a few people having this, a, a series of comments and then maybe one or two people shooting a, a, a one-word comment. I saw a lot of those quick.
Yep, so different questions had more narrative responses, right? Each person could only provide one response to each question, but you might have seen one person who responded similarly to multiple different questions.
Yeah, that's, that's what it looked like.
Yeah, so you can see like some only had ten responses, whereas one of them had forty-some odd responses.
Yeah.
Um, and yes, we did take into consideration if it was one person who had the same complaints, you know, in multiple questions, we didn't necessarily elevate that as a fact.
Okay, because I seen, I seen, I saw that, it appeared to me that that's what was happening.
Yes, and there was one respondent that we think may have been.
You notated that.
Trying to get.
So if we would hold our questions to the, to the end of.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I apologize. I'll keep my mouth shut.
So our recommendations based on the student survey, obviously, um, you know, it was a small number of, of surveys that we were reviewing, so we take this with a grain of salt. Um, but one thing that was pretty obvious to us is that the BPI system should strive to recruit more diverse staff and teachers to better represent the makeup of the, the student body. We know the challenges there. We know it's not just Bolton that's happening that those challenges, but we should strive for it nonetheless. Um, we thought perhaps more comprehensive feedback from the student body around DEI issues might be suggested because like I said, this was not distributed widely through the school. This was just through an email lister that mostly went to, to parents. Um, and that there is the potential for adding an equity and inclusion subcommittee on the student council to elevate and solve any issues that may occur in the school system in real time and to also ensure that school events are engaging and welcoming to diverse populations. Um, because there were some populations like the LGBTI plus and, and females who felt sometimes like, you know, they were treated differently than others. Um, it is also suggested that DEI training be incorporated into the curriculum. If it is not already, I don't mean teacher training, I mean into the curriculum because there were some comments about insensitive comments by children, um, or other students in the school system that, um, could be alleviated if children were given some DEI training, um, just as part of their, their education, learning how to, to communicate with one another. Um, and it's also suggested that staff, particularly staff like counselors who interact very closely with, um, students on some of these more sensitive issues might benefit from additional DEI training above and beyond that, which is just required of all the other staff so that they can be particularly skilled and culturally competent in those areas. Um, and we thought the Board of Education should consider how it can affordably and creatively provide more opportunities for students outside of school hours, not super related to, um, you know, diversity in and of itself. However, it was raised up in quite a few of the comments that the lack of out after-school activities, the lack of sports, the lack of extracurriculars was a drawback for some of the students. And that does impact our ability to draw in new students into our school system, including choice students and Columbia students. And we know that the ability to draw people in is also how we, we, um, increase diversity in our school systems. And then, um, we thought that the Board of Education should adopt an equity and inclusion statement as part of their mission and vision scenes that are on their website to ensure that they're setting a tone for the students, staff and parents, that diversity is valued and equity and inclusion are part of their goal at the school system, um, within the whole school system. So those were the, you know, nothing earth shattering, but broad suggestions, easy suggestions that we had, um, or based on the student survey. And then, um, because this is our final presentation, we are an ad hoc committee and we were slated to terminate as of February, where we were all extended to February. We pulled together final commission recommendations for the whole diversity commission. Um, and so first and foremost, we as a commission, we strongly feel that, you know, while the town should have a permanent commission on diversity, equity and inclusion, we heard the concerns of the, the board last meeting and we ourselves have, you know, concerns about how possible it would be to, um, get a sufficient number of volunteers to fill such a board in an ongoing way. Um, but that, you know, if the board still wanted to do that, we would certainly be in favor of it. Probably a smaller board than the ones that, um, we're currently leaving so that it's easier to fill those positions, probably more of a five to seven member board. Um, but that, in lieu of creating a permanent commission below are some of the steps that, you know, can be taken to make Bolton equitable and inclusive. Uh, first and foremost, the adoption of the drafted statement on equity and inclusion. Um, I was hoping that we would have time to review it and take a vote on it tonight, but I know we have a busy schedule. Um, and so my hope would be that the board can get back to me with a date of when you plan to discuss it so that we can, we can comment if there are any questions or concerns about that statement. Um, I strongly, we strongly suggest as the commission that you guys conduct an accessibility assessment for all town, um, property and public property and, and develop an improvement plan because that was something that came out in the adult survey, um, was that folks with, um, mobility and disability challenges struggle, um, in public spaces in town and they don't have equal access to enjoyment of those spaces, which we are obligated to provide legally. Um, one thing you can do is make all public restrooms that only have one stall or one toilet in them gender neutral. Easy peasy. And what, what I mean by making them gender neutral is put a sign on the door that says they are for everybody for gender neutral. Obviously ones like this one that have more than one stall are gonna remain male or female. Um, but if it's just one stall, uh, making them gender neutral is an easy way to be a more inclusive town. Um, create and implement a plan to recruit, hire and retain more diver- diverse staff for both the town and the school system. We already touched upon that. Um, add a brief DEI statement to the charge for each town board or commission so that they are all responsible for making sure that they are operating, um, with diversity, equity and inclusion in mind. Um, and if the town was interested in doing that, we would be happy to help, um, come up with a, a statement that could be included to each town, um, committee's charge. Um, assign at least one town staff person to be responsible for working with other town entities, residents and businesses as necessary to implement the town's affordable housing plan goals. Um, you know, we are obligated as a town to write the plan, but I, you know, we would prefer it not sit on a shelf and, and, and not get, um, used. Uh, affordable housing is critical to making sure that our town is accessible to, you know, a, a broad diverse swath of residents in the state of Connecticut who could enjoy living here. And so we feel very strongly that making sure that the affordable housing plan goals co- come to fruition um, is really important. And then if we do not have, you know, a permanent commission, then supporting citizen or regional nonprofit-led initiatives in town related to diversity, um, would be super important. And we feel that the town can do that by providing free space, by providing technology or providing marketing for such events in town to make sure that the residents are aware that such initiatives are happening around town. Last thing that we wanted to say as a commission is that we really enjoyed working together and we wanted to say thank you to the board for forming the commission. Um, and that we, you know, even though our charge may be ending now, we are looking forward to continuing the ongoing work, um, with both the town and other residents. Um, because the work of DEIs is very important and it's, it's not going away and so.
Good job. You know, I, I have.
Miss Moore?
I just wanted to say that you, you have a knack of doing a presentation, getting right to the point and, and getting out there and we do appreciate that.
Thank you. I tried to be.
I'm sure every other, other member does. And I do have a couple of questions, but I'll, I'll, I'll pass and wait unless somebody else wants to jump in.
We'll start now at the other end of the table then. Uh, Adam, would you like to ask questions?
I don't have so much questions, although I want to say that I think that, that recommendations that the committee, the commission made are all, um, things we should already have been doing. Um, I think in particular, things like the assessability, accessibility assessment. Um, that's something we probably were required to do ten years ago. And we just, we still have buildings in town that aren't accessible and that's probably why the frustration of people is out there. I don't know that we're ready as a board to discuss or adopt the drafted statement because I think it's a dense document that requires some thought. But every other item on the list, I would be prepared to, to vote in support of now.
Um, Mike Aramita? You're.
And your hand is up.
Oh, all right. I'll get rid of that too. Uh, I'm amazed by the presentation and, and the work that you guys have done in everything from the adults to the kids and, and everything that showed up here. And, uh, he, Adam was right that many of these things we, we should be doing or should have done years ago. Unfortunately, some of them have to do with the buildings that, you know, don't lend themselves easily to some of these things. And, you know, we, whenever we talk about high-density housing, I always bring up our lousy soil, which doesn't promote high-density housing without sewers and things like that. But the, the basic premise and the findings, I agree with completely.
Thank you. Mr. Petra?
Excellent presentation. Thank you, Amanda.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Bob Moore?
This is a weird one. Uh, uh, I'm sorry. In reading through it, you, you had your, your definitions. The one on equity, I read that three times. And after I was done reading it, I was still wondering what I was reading. I, I have, I have a problem with the whole equity concept itself, but I, I'm, I'm a believer in equality. I think equality covers it all, but obviously others don't. I mean, I, I accept that, but I was trying to, I read this thing. It's a three sentence, well anyways, it's there. But, and tonight maybe, I think we, we're gonna have to meet again, probably, uh, I'm a subcommittee member with all the members there, if we're gonna dig deep into this thing instead of tying up the entire selectmen's meeting. You've done a lot of work, you deserve that. So we can, so we can get into the weeds of.
Would you like a brief?
I'm asking questions, but getting a response back because I, you know, I spent a lot of time going over this because I felt a lot of work and a lot of good stuff here. But this question is here that, you know, that I, I put myself in, you have, these categories have little, uh, initials for, yeah, I, I have, I have one for myself. It's O W G, old white guy. Um, so, being in that category, some of these things may not flow directly into what it means. What, what's it really mean, you know?
It's raining.
Okay. Well, so that's why I mention it and, and when we have a sit-down and like that, I.
And I, myself and probably any member of the commission are happy to have coffee someday if we wanted to have a chat outside of the.
I think it's gonna take more than coffee. There's, there's a lot.
There it goes.
There's a, there's a, listen, you guys.
There's a lot, there's a lot.
This is one of the most successful volunteer committees I have ever seen. The information that you gathered and the reports that you put together are extraordinary. Yeah, so, you know, there's a, there's a lot to discuss here. There's a lot to think about. And, and I think it's really important, I think the work that you've done is important. I think the Board of Selectmen believes that the work you've done is important. I think the work that you've done is important. I think the Board of Selectmen believes that the work you've done is important, which is why they gave you this charge. And I I agree with, you know, Mr. Moore. I know I'm not a voting member of this board, but uh, you know, I I think if I were, you know, that I I would agree with Adam's comment that that, you know, there's there's a lot of really good stuff here. And there's 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 a lot of information that the board needs to take and move forward. And I think that, you know, we are doing some things, right, that we don't necessarily recognize um as moving forward with some of these goals. And I think, you know, part of that conversation can be, you know, what are we doing that helps move these, you know, move the ball forward on some of these goals and how can we, how can we do more? And I have one question. Has the Board of Education and Superintendent been apprised of your findings with regard to the youth?
No, the plan was to go to person.
I would like to address that because I think it's very important that it goes to the Board of Education. Your recommendations specifically for them, I think, are very clear and very concise. Um and I think some of them are, they have the ability to do without huge financial input. Um I think they'd be very interested in them and I think looking at the numbers of respondents and the variation with the that came back. I was a little sad that there weren't more respondents, but I understand what you were up against, you know, in in getting this out there and and you got response. So um yes, I'm I'm looking forward to having this. Uh Adam?
I I agree with uh Jim that the Board of Ed needs to be braced with some of these things because the really you know, lack of diversity among the adults in the school system may be a real problem. Or may not be, but I think it probably is. Because it suggests a lack of attention to that issue. Um but I did have a concern about the small sample sites doesn't give you a whole lot of help with the student findings. I mean, if you have three people in a group, their experiences could be just idiosyncratic. But I did get the undercurrent of, and I want to know how the commission felt about this, that female students are challenged by the environment that they're in. And is that, you know, that there's three female students who are just really vocal about it? Or is that that, you know, that was a cross turn of thirty female students? And to me, in this current world and environment over the last few years, I think that our schools need to be paying a lot more attention to that. If if that's really something that's that's a broad um environmental issue for female students, that's very troubling to me.
Kind of the genesis for one of the recommendations in terms of trying to make the school and ask them what we just didn't make it broader. You know, we think that if they really, if it came from them and there was an opportunity at home or whatever, they're going to fill it out. You know, then then we're going to get a better population. There might be an opportunity for better analysis, but but that was kind of the genesis for it. We were all surprised by that.
It's not not specifically with respect to Bolton, but in my professional life, I've had over the last five or ten years, a number of instances of female students who are not not only not comfortable in their environment, but but really badly harassed. And I feel like that's an undercurrent that's happened in in Connecticut schools for a long time.
I think we can go back historically.
And.
Not just the last few years.
Standing lip service to bullying or other things um that it's just like, sometimes it's considered just part of the part of the environment. And and I'd like to know whether our Board of Ed, whether our Superintendent is really, you know, taking that to heart and actually doing anything about it or just. Unfortunately, the trend in in my experience, again, outside of Bolton, is a bureaucratic response and not a personal response. And I feel like that's something that every staff member should internalize. Every administrator should internalize and frankly, every parent should internalize. And if that's not happening, that's the root of the problem.
Thank you.
Look, when Armita has his hand up.
Uh just one moment. I did address the um staffing situation at the schools. I was on the Board of Education for twelve years. I and we started with.
We got you, Mike.
We'll be right to you, Mike. And.
Thank you.
And one of the things I can tell you is we're competition with every other school system that's looking for a diverse teaching population. We are not the highest, most highly paid teach of teachers. We are have a smaller system. Um and so there's a lot of competition. I remember there was a time that we had two hundred and sixty applications for a teaching position. And not one came from a truly diverse, we thought, because we were looking at skin call. But there was diversity in it. When we got into the discussions about where they were from, what their experiences were, when we had someone who applied from South Africa. Now, they happen to be white, South African, but that was a that was a diverse, that would put diverse diversity into our situation. So it's um, we are in great competition with many, with all the school systems looking to do much the same thing.
And we were limited in the data that we had on the the teachers and faculty and all we had was the race data. So it would be interesting to also do more of an assessment um of the the types of ways that the the staff and and faculty identify.
Thank you. Uh Mike Armita?
Yeah, what one of the things that's bothered me for a long time with our diversity in our school system and we brought this up. God, it's twenty-five or thirty years ago when we were talking about busing students from one town to another to to make the schools diverse. And one of the things that I brought up and you you touched on it in your survey and that's how the the students interact with each other away from school. And you brought up after school athletics and things like that because being a diverse population in school doesn't really do anything if the kids aren't together out of school. It's going home to your neighbor or to your friend's house and eating the ethnic foods of your friend and and seeing the things that they do in their home and and interacting on that level that really makes you a diverse community. It's not just the number of people that are in school. It's the interactions at home, the home life, the the families getting together. All of that stuff is what's the real important part of it. And it makes it very, very difficult when kids come in on a bus and at three o'clock in the afternoon, they get on a bus and go home to some other place and don't have an opportunity for the kid to come to my kid's house and have the Italian food. And, you know, my kid's going to their house and having their ethnic foods and and really interacting as as kids getting to know each other intimately, if you know what I'm getting at. And that's a real, real, real hard thing in a community like ours to make that happen. And that's one of the things that's always bothered me about, you know, not just the busing is, that's an issue that people get upset or not get upset about, but that the the bus taking people home to a different community eliminates that possibility of the real interaction. And and that's one thing that that you actually came up in this study was how many kids interacted outside of school and what one of the recommendations were more after school programs so that they could be together outside the school environment. So that was very interesting to me.
Thank you, Mike. But.
I just wanted to make two comments. One, um you would comment to your equity. On our commission, we had representatives from my pretty close to our family members of almost every um category that we had in our survey.
Yeah.
And we still, we all learned something from this when we were classing the definitions. I learned stuff that I had because I was in the same boat. I had, we think how I thought about things. So there's always an opportunity to learn and I think that that's part part of what we think would be beneficial to this town is having more of that education of of that that kind of thing benefit from it. The other thing I wanted to say is that Amanda is an amazing leader. Our town is extremely lucky to have her volunteering her efforts. I can't say that strongly enough, but one of the major leaders.
Well, we're very proud that she's also accepted a position on one of our boards.
Yep. We're lucky.
Um so uh I would like to say too that in looking at um the amount of information in the now the three pieces, the the two surveys and the um recommendations, the conclusions and the recommendations uh is a lot for the board to digest. And we will have, uh and I think it's a great suggestion to have a separate meeting of of a subcommittee um whether it's personnel or whatever uh to review it and um have dialogue even before another meeting, maybe a third meeting before any action. So we'd like to say thank you very, very much. I know this has been um for sixteen months of labor and love and passion by so many and you've shaped to many people. So it's it's been, I think, it's great.
You you've been living with it for a long time and you've had that conversation. We we have, and and that's the point. There's a lot. There's a lot here. And and I'm just, I'm I got hung up on one little sentence there or 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 comments, which means there's a lot of conversation in there.
For the.
I mean, that's I mean, and it's I'm not I'm not saying it in a negative manner either, but there there is a lot of conversation.
Conversation.
And good, yeah, it is.
For the commission's benefit, I we probably already knew, but the town proper, not the school, but the town proper is preparing to have diversity training for its staff again, which it did five years ago.
Oh.
I don't re- I don't remember what the day was.
And so uh.
Probably four anymore.
Okay, and we were still preparing for that as well. And we're trying to make multiple times so that all staff members can be included.
It looks like we will have three sessions of up to twenty-five people per session.
Mr. Armita?
No, I'm just agreeing with uh Jim.
Is there anything else you'd like to add? And Mr. De Pietro? Again, a very big thank you to all of you for all of your your efforts and thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you so much. Sorry you have to get wet on the way home.
But you're welcome to stay for the interview. So we are, we are now uh going back if we're going in order. We're going back. We are beyond four C, the proposed packaging extended producer responsibility bill. Uh Jim, do you want to do an introduction?
Well, we've provided the board with some information and re- really in a nutshell is it it puts the responsibility for packaging on the people that are manufacturing and packaging the products uh from a waste stream perspective. And we've been asked by Midneirock to provide a letter of support for the bill that is uh coming up in this legislative session.
Question, question?
Mr. Armita?
Yeah, uh as I was reading through some of it, I didn't get through the whole bill, but does this, is there a limit on the number of times things can go through the recycle system? Uh is that part of what this bill is about? Uh it seems to talk about limits on recycling and and stuff like that. Is 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 that something that's covered in here that I'm missing?
Depends.
Bob, did you have the answer for that?
I really, it depends, but depends on what it is.
Okay, you know, I was wondering if this bill uh, you know, tried to set out limits or uh extend limits of the number of times things could be recycled and and repackaged and redone.
Can I say something, Mr.? I don't know what, but but Mr. Armita or Mr. Moore's reaction was, but I'm very curious. You were in the state legislature for a long time and Mr. Teller, being an attorney himself, I won't even ask him, but I'm very curious whatever he got his reaction was to seven hundred how many, how many man hours or person hours did it take to write that whole law? Man, oh man, oh man.
This is a proposal. This is come before. This is coming out of the Environment Committee. Uh this has been written probably with the help of a few people, but it comes out of the Legislative Commissioner's Office. There's usually one author. And he's probably had great input from deep and from other environmental recycling groups. There's probably been a consortium consortium type effort to put this together. This is very well flushed out for the very beginning of a session. So I'm suspecting this is a couple of years worth of work. And the drafting has been around the table a number of times to other lawyers within other um specialty groups that this is within their either their expertise or their uh mission or their passion. So.
Diarrhea of the ball for the life.
Yes.
Yes. And and it's it's very difficult to say I would write a letter in support of something that I find myself having a hard time understanding. Adam probably could handle this, but I think it's above my level.
So the first part is is the definition language, which they always tend to draft in new legislations so that people understand what the response, which what follows in further pages. There are twenty-three pages of it and the enacting date, I believe, is October uh when you go to the very end. It's this is very complex. It's not a simple statement of saying, yes, we should be looking at putting more recycling responsibility on the packagers. That's a very simple statement. This is not simple at all. And I would almost like to see I would like to see an analysis from the from the uh Office of Legislative Research, but and that's no, really? But they want us to, they want us to write a letter of support. So.
They want us to support this bill, but that's just because they ask us to support the bill. Doesn't mean you have to do that. But what we should do is support the idea that producers of packaging and materials should bear the true costs of what they put out into the economy and into the consumer's hands. That's the truth. They shouldn't be shifting that. When you, when you decide to package your stapler or your whatever in a clamshell of plastic that will live forever if it's if it's put into the stream, you should bear the cost that you can't open or that you'll get a paper cut if you do open.
Or you get cut with your knife.
You should, you as the business should bear the cost of that downstream and not shift it onto communities that didn't ask for it. And and you should give consumers the choice to not have that kind of packaging. That's just, that's all this is in concept, and I think we could support that concept and and tender it to our legislators to actually bring it out into reality, but expect that they will do that and should do that. And that they should get together and figure out a way to do that, that it's a priority. Because otherwise, we're faced with spending ten percent more every year on our tipping fees, and I know we don't want to do that.
No.
Well, the concept, the concept is, the concept is good, particularly in COVID has changed the lifestyles of a lot of people and it certainly has changed our 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 stream of recyclable material. With everybody, not everybody, not me, but a lot of people, Amazon, et cetera. I mean, box upon box upon box and and a packaging within the packaging and packaging. And that's not going away. It just uh that that lifestyle has been pretty much adapted. Uh it may flux a little bit, but I don't see it going away. And it is important that, you know, we well, I think on on our on our side that we let our legislators know that it's a good concept. I have no idea what that, what this legislation really says. I mean.
Which goes to my point.
Right.
We don't have enough information.
Right.
I I'm I'm, I am, I feel good about the concept. I think the concept is a good concept. If we were to support anything, we would say we support the concept of of better packaging and in in the cost being uh this better packaging that that lowers the 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 stream of of recyclable materials that we have to deal with. And also uh lowering the cost by perhaps the the creator of the. perhaps the, the creator of the packaging, making material that is more recyclable and more, more, more saleable, reusable. That's the other thing too. A lot of what goes there, nobody wants. I mean, they have to end up burning it or burying it. They, they can't really.
So this bill is before this committee and will have a long road to hoe before it gets out of the legislature. And what they would like to know is what parts of the bill you do not like as well as being in support of. Now, we've been approached by a special interest group.
No, it's not a special interest group. It's a, it's a consortium that we belong to. Midneirock, which is the group that we belong to that disposes of our hazardous waste.
And that is their special interest. I will just, I will stand by my statement. I understand what you said. And they have asked us to support it as, because we work with them and we are a member of that group. But on the legislative side, they want to know what we don't like, what we would like corrected, what we'd like to see better in the bill.
Everything after page one could be eliminated.
Yeah.
Well, you look at, you look at
Then you're leaving it to the beer.
You look at them, and it's no registered stewardship organization shall create any unreasonable barrier for participation by responsible parties in such stewardship organizations. Now, really.
It's, it's thirty, thirty pages of mumbo jumbo and no real substance that a normal person can accept. Unfortunately, what Adam said, put the whole thing in about a paragraph and that would be fine with me. Anything more than that is just a waste.
When it is, when it is written and passed in that form, the com, the closing part of that legislation usually says, and regulations will be developed by the department.
Yeah, I know.
Creates a whole, yeah, they do, but you have, you have, once, and once regulations, regulations are harder to move than legislation and, and are done by, so I will go back then. We've had this discussion. Is there more discussion that you would like to have? Bob, DePicto, would you like more discussion?
No, I'm very thrown up.
Is there a way you could get us a synopsis of this thing in readable form? That hits the highlights and so that the normal, normal person could understand what they're trying to tell us?
The, the, the stewardship institute is their summary is their summary. You know, this industry, the rest, an industry-focused proposal, you realize that, that it's intended to create industry groups that are going to write the, the plans in the first place.
Yes.
Which is
I didn't realize that.
No, it's, it's not the state mandating things. It's the state mandating that they start the process and come back with proposals.
We usually don't enter. The question, the, the, why is this before us in this packet? We were asked to, to support, to come up with a support of this particular bill before the legislature so that they can say that these towns are in support of the bill. That is within their group. They're looking for
I don't write a letter of
Supportive by numbers.
I don't write a letter on the, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen without their approval is really what it comes down to.
Do I have a motion before us to write a letter of support?
Yeah, I move that we direct the town administrator to write us their generally supporting the concept of raise bill number one fifteen legislator, legislature and extended producer responsibility for consumer packaging. That's what I agree with. Without endorsing every
Do I have a, do I have a
Thank you. Now I'll say.
Is there more discussion?
I can support a letter.
I will personally support this motion because there are too many questions about how to rule ultimately create more bureaucracy and costs to enforce. Too many unknowns.
Mr. Armita?
I, I think I said enough about it.
I come because of my background and because I know that we have international businesses in our town as well as small businesses that use packaging that we have not reached out to. We do not understand the effect on our local businesses besides our own effect as a town that I will, I will not be in support of this motion. So at this time, I will call, vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One, yes. Two, yes. Michael?
Nope.
Michael is a no.
No.
And Pam Sawyer is a no. So the motion fails. Is there a second motion that would like to be made? In the direction?
I, I would like, I'd like to see how this shakes out as it moves forward and maybe question, like you said, are local businesses that would be affected?
Are you asking for some action?
Nope. Just maybe if the town administrator or the first selectman might contact Simon Eyes or, you know, one of those businesses that, that uses packaging and, and just see if they have feelings on this bill. Just so we take into consideration our people.
Thank you.
Why not contact your neighbor? Why not, why did they get to get contacted at first and not the, the general run of the people in this town? I mean, people going to pay the cost of this, of not, of not doing this. They're the ones who are going to be asked to pay the taxes to support the tipping fees that this stuff gets into the, into the waste stream. So I, I certainly, first of all, businesses at the level of the ones you're talking about have trade groups, they have lobbyists, they're already at the table when this bill is discussed from the get-go.
Heck, yes.
The, the run-of-the-mill of the people in this town that pay the taxes to pay for those garbage, that garbage waste stream and tipping fees are not at the table except through their elected representatives. Which is why I think we should support the concept of this bill and leave the last rest of it to legislative process. But I think we've moved past that. So why don't we go to the next item of the, of the agenda?
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, we'll move on. Ongoing business of the update for Alexander Miller Davies Trail Project. Do you have insurance information, Jim?
Yes, we did. We did have a conference call with our insurer, Karma. And they, with, with regard to liability insurance for mountain biking trails. And they said, absolutely no, not us. It is the single cause of the largest payout that they've had historically. If the, if the Board of Selectmen would like to support mountain biking trails, they would be happy to try to connect us with an insurer that will insure us for that use, but from their perspective, absolutely no, not ever. And the, he didn't give me an exact amount, but the payout was measured in millions.
Hearing that, would the board consider having our town administrator reach out to the student and ask if she would consider a non-mountain bike trail creation? Would that satisfy her project? And just have a pedestrian trail?
I don't think personally.
Sir?
I don't think it's our town administrator's problem personally. The town problem. It's a student problem between her and her school advisor.
Mike Armita?
Yeah, it, it kind of seems to me that, you know, we, we're, we're putting a parking lot over by Munson's. We're talking about it and we're talking about running a, a, a walking or a pathway up along Bolton Center Road and the students have talked at least two different trails, any of which could be used by a mountain bike. And, and once it's created, it's kind of, you know, you could put a sign up that says no mountain biking, but that's not going to stop anybody from riding their bike through there. And, you know, none of these, I don't know how you stop it, you know? If, if, if it's being done on town property, we're liable for it without being able to control it. So you know, where do we go? You know, the town insurer does, you know, what if I take my mountain bike and I go over and, and start riding behind Munson's down through that way to Coventry? And I crash, you know, I'm going to sue and the town is going to, you know. How do we, how do we prevent that? And are we liable already?
Adam has a response to that?
We're not, because here's my concern. There, there's a statute that says that if you make recreational facilities available without charge to people, you're not, you're not responsible for the
As a municipality.
As a municipality. But my concern is that if the municipality creates a trail, then you're, you potentially are responsible for the design of that trail or the construction of that trail. When you affirmatively act to create something as opposed to just passively let people use areas for passive recreation, you've, you've injected an element of choice that could expose you to liability. And that's my concern about these. Rating, I mean, it's okay, for me, it's okay if it's a hiking trail and if it's limited to the use of hiking and it's only because I think people are going to walk where they're going to walk anyway and not creating any liability. This is what Kermit is responding to, is that once you start telling people where to ride their bikes, if they ride over the wrong place and they break their neck, that's a massive liability. And I don't want to be in the business your bikes unless it's a, you know, something like the rail trail. It's practically a road. It's been maintained. It's been created specifically for that purpose. But a mountain bike trail? I don't want to be the one telling people which route they should be taking through the woods, over the rocks and the, and the
And recommending it.
Rades and recommending it, posting it that way.
There's a huge difference between our trails are ADA excessive. That tells you something as opposed to a mountain bike trail, which is the absolute opposite of ADA. So the, the, I mean, the hazards are there. They're known hazards. So my, I, I would recommend that we let, let the student know that because of the insurance issue, we, we can't go forward with this. You may want to rethink what, what you're doing and, and come back with us with, with, with a plan.
What are you responsible?
Is there consensus with, from the board to reach out to the student with that? Bob, DePicto, you're shaking your head. No, you don't want to reach out to the student?
I don't think so.
We have to say something. She, she has a project before us for a mountain biking trail, so it is our responsibility to, to share the information of the insurance question back to her.
Let me ask you this. If the, if the insurance liability, if the insurance company said, no problem, will we still give her a go?
If it's no, no problem to create a hiking trail? Is that what you're asking?
No. I'm saying you're putting the, the reason for rejecting her proposal on the insurance company.
Correct.
I don't think that's good enough personally.
So what he, what Bob is asking is if, i- if the insurance was not an obstacle, would the Board of Selectmen have approved her project?
Thank you.
You, you didn't vote on it, so I guess you don't know.
Don't know.
Hypothetical question that I prefer not to answer.
We have, we've not, we've not had that discussion, Bob?
I'll get started here.
I, I think it's reasonable to, you know, give the report back to the student, Bob.
Yes, yes.
So I have a consensus to have Jim reach out to the student. Very good. Thank you very much. You're good, Adam?
Yes.
Moving on then to, to five B, interval house donation.
We have a letter in our package from the Interval House. They've said that they serve eight of our residents during the, this last fiscal year. And they're asking that we consider a set aside of a thousand dollars in our budget as a donation to Interval House so that they can continue to serve our residents in the future. Historically, we've generally not given much, if anything, to organizations like this. We try to support our residents through supporting in-town programs more often than not. But that is completely up to the board.
Do you talk to Carrie about this?
Ca- Ca- Carrie did, did say that, you know, she concurred with the fact that they, they, they do, you know, serve a need and they did serve some of our town residents last year.
But
I, I'm against generally doing it this way because either you have a contract relationship for them to provide services or they're just like, because where does it end? I mean, anybody could come and say, well, we provided services to people. Make a donation. That's not really the role of the municipality. They, they should fundraise directly from people in the community if they're if, if they feel that's appropriate, but for the town to make a donation, doesn't make sense to me. If we were going to have a direct contract relationship where they were the first person, our social services director would, would call in certain situations and they would be obligated to provide services, that's one thing, but I don't think it's bang for your buck.
They wanted the recipients of the, of the Foundation for Public Giving grants this year?
I don't know.
I
It's possible.
I'm
And I should say that's not casting aspersions on the, on the organization. It's, it's, it's just to say that I don't think it's the appropriate way to fund those services.
They're the provider for our region.
Yes.
But there's no oversight.
You don't know anything about the Hartford Foundation.
There's no town oversight if they're, they're
No.
So I understand, but there's no oversight of the
Is there any, anyone that wish just to make a motion at this time? Hearing no motion, then we'll move on. We'll go on to the ARPA funding. This, we're on D.
You know, we, we are, you know, coming again, up against some, a deadline here with regard to our ARPA funding. We, we do need to make some decisions about how we're going to spend that funding. And at this point in stage of the game, you know, my, my recommendation is going to be that we go out with an RFP for some design services to get an architect or somebody like that on board to help us put together a set of specifications and bid documents for the teardown of the Notch Road Municipal Center using the ARPA funds. And that would include the greenhouse at the Bolton Center School with the, the Board of Education's approval. And in both circumstances with the teardown of the buildings, there's going to have to some, be something done to close up the, the end walls, right? So where the greenhouse would come out at the Bolton Center School, there's a wall there that will have to be built because taking the greenhouse down will leave a void in the exterior wall. Where the Notch Road Municipal Center would come down, there's going to be an end wall missing on the structure. It will require the relocation of some utilities. And I'd, I'd really like to get moving forward on a project and make some decisions about how we're going to utilize that ARPA funding. And that is my recommendation. how we're going to utilize that ARPA funding. And that is my recommendation. Obviously, the board may have different ideas, different recommendations, but nonetheless, we we need to really move the ball forward on this particular uh, subject.
What action are you looking for specifically?
Well, at some point, if the board is in agreement that we should use the ARPA funding to tear down the Notch Road Municipal Center, I would bring before you a draft motion that includes the things that we talked about with uh, with Mark Bowden that identifies why the Board of Selectmen believes that it complies with the last final rule on the ARPA funding with regard to public health and safety. But at this point, you know, if I if I got a consensus that this is something that the board wanted to move forward with, or if they wanted to set a meeting or have a meeting of the facilities and Public Safety Subcommittee or something to discuss this deeper. Um, but if if I had consensus that this is what the board wants to use it for, I would start preparing a document that I could go out to RFP for design services for the teardown of the Notch Road Municipal Center.
Just ask what other options we have for that money. I mean, it seems like a good option to me. I just want to ruling on something else.
We could use it to pay for the debt on the fire truck, which is approximately six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, there 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 is a lot of choices.
Water, bring wa- a water, and from Manchester.
We don't have, we don't have time, we don't have time for that at this point.
But that would be one of the
But that was one of the discussions early on before we had an election and a change of the board.
So the so-called sort of expendable ready projects are take down of the Notch Road Center, the fire truck, anything else that's on the short.
Well, there are, there are probably some things in the capital budget that we could use to purchase things in the capital budget and reduce the dollar value of the capital budget.
Yes.
Oh, I'm just a minute, please.
I'm sorry. Okay. I'm gonna make a two-minute break. Too much.
We're on break. We're on break, Mike. We'll remember your hand.
Okay.
Oh, that's wrong. Would you put a sign?
Be careful going home. It looks like sleet or freezing rain.
Says the Bolton temperature is thirty-one.
So my patio is frozen.
Yep.
And Jim, thank you for your intermenting.
All right, unmuted, breaks over.
We're we're called meeting back to order. We are discussing the five D ARPA funding.
And Selectman Aramita has his hand up.
And we, the floor goes to Mike Aramita.
Okay, uh, I'd just like to say, you know, the uh, putting that money towards tearing down the building makes more sense to me because it's not our money, so to speak. It's a, it's a grant. I I feel better bonding to pay for something we own, like a fire truck or a bridge or something like that, rather than bonding to see something torn down. At least we, if I'm borrowing money to have to pay for something, I'd rather have something in my hand as opposed to something that's gone. You know, it it just doesn't set well with me.
No, I agree with.
Yep, good. That's a good point.
Uh, DePietro?
I'm good. I agree.
I think we have consensus around the table. It is a health issue. This is, we have confirmed with DRS that this is a good expenditure for this. Uh, at this time, then I would ask a motion for a motion to grant the town administrator the ability to begin the process of using ARPA funding to tear down the appropriate sections of the Notch Road Municipal Center.
And and the greenhouse.
And the greenhouse. Thank you.
And and reconstruct the walls necessary.
I move that we direct the town administrator to prepare.
Speak loudly and Adam is going to make a motion.
I move that we direct the town administrator to prepare the necessary resolutions and request for proposals to apply the ARPA money toward the projects of tearing down the Notch Road Municipal Center, removing the greenhouse from the high school and, or the, the full central, sorry, and closing off the two buildings to accommodate those removals.
Yeah. Can I ask for an amendment?
Uh, the motion has been moved to second and, uh, would you like to ask for it to be amended? Mr. Moore?
Only in that it, uh, here's, here's my thought, then you can put in a motion. Jim mentioned something else that depending upon funds and what you, what what these items cost, if there's room, we'd also like to consider some of the capital items that are currently on the, on our our capital project as part of this. It, I believe that's
It doesn't, it doesn't look like there'll be room. It looks like, based based on the last estimate, which was a real estimate.
Yeah.
That the ARPA funding is about equal to the amount that we need for the demolition.
Okay, I just didn't want to limit it to a point if 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 should they re-access funds? Well, we can also come back to it.
You can go back to it. Yeah.
All right, never mind. Yeah, we always come back.
Do you want to add any of that to an amendment, to amend your motion?
I don't think it's necessary.
No, that's good. I'm good.
All right. A further discussion on the amendment as before us? Everybody is ready, I mean.
Just a motion. Get away.
It's after nine o'clock, is it? Motion before us, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, the motion carries unanimously. Just one moment, please.
So
We need to, it was not on our agenda.
It was, but it got erased. We have to do it sooner rather than later. It'll be coming to a meeting near you if you don't add it to the agenda tonight.
We have, we can put it on Thursday.
We can, we can add it to Thursday's.
Let's add it to Thursday's agenda. Um, four D, that was not on the agenda. Okay. Correspondents, uh, we have a a letter from, uh, the Vice Chairman of the Veterans Commission regarding the veterans' tax exemption with points to increase the property tax relief for veterans. And in the letter from Barry Sterns, former Selectman, but now Vice Chairman of the Veterans Commission, and he's held many other hats, uh, including the Board of Education, um, uh, this was, letter was agreed upon by the whole commission as a whole. And they're asking either in a one-time to increase the exemption of forty-five hundred dollars, which was in, has been in place for at least twenty years, uh, and they want to increase it to ten thousand dollars off of personal property. And or you could do it in a phase-in over five years to increase it.
What, what's our mill rate right now?
Almost forty.
Just shy of forty.
Thirty-nine point
Nine.
High, aye, mine.
So you're looking at what a a four hundred dollar reduction in the actual taxes paid on the ten thousand, uh, if you give them a ten thousand dollar
Right.
exemption. And right now, they they get forty-five dollars. No, uh.
About a hundred and eighty.
Yeah, about a hundred and eighty, yes.
Yep.
And I believe there were three hu- over three hundred and seven, three hundred and sixty-one veteran households.
Yeah, so.
It is veterans, it is there, and it is falls to their widow as well.
Would, uh, that would reduce our taxes, uh, our in, our tax receipts by a hundred and forty-four thousand.
That's a, that's a number they they presented, yeah.
Right, that's a significant amount. And I I don't knows, I could support it in one big lump sum like that, but potentially the phase-in or something. And and a lot of that is based on what is going to happen. I mean, that's a significant that's, that's cuts bigger than we've made it in other years at the end of the year kind of thing.
I have a suggestion that
Bob Moore?
This is an item that should go to a subcommittee to look over and take the request if we're gonna, if we're even consider it. And I, and and I spoke to the to the commission and said, it, a subcommittee should look this way and say, okay, if we feel that yeah, that's a good idea, but we can't afford to do it based on a proposal. Perhaps there is a plan, a phase-in plan that could be at least brought forward for discussion to the board. Um, rather than us trying to sit here tonight trying to come up with something. Um, th- this needs to be thought out with a whole set of numbers brought forward for the board I I to consider. But it should, it it should begin at the subcommittee level.
Is there an interest in that? That I would ask for, uh, volunteers, Mr. Moore, you've just volunteered yourself as being number one. I'd like two members of the board.
The subcommittee is determined to.
This is, this is
Probably be an ad, probably would be an ad hoc.
For this particular, just with this particular issue. Mr. Keller?
I don't have space.
They tried to bury him in another committee.
Would you volunteer?
Because the committees you want are pretty active this year.
Mr. DePietro, would you volunteer to be on this ad hoc committee to work with Bob Moore?
I could.
You sucked me into on the other one, so you owe me one.
That would be strictly from the record. Um, Mr. Mr. Aramita, do you wish to be on it also?
Uh, I don't wish to be on it, but if there's no other choice, I will serve with Bob and Bob.
Then we'll make it a committee of three, making two being a quorum. And in case one cannot attend. So, thank you, Bob DePietro, Bob Moore, and uh, Bob Aramita, and I'm going to, here's prerogative to ask Bob Moore. I mean, Mike Aramita.
He can become a Bob and join.
Just call me Bob. I'll be on the committee.
It used to be three Bobs on the board. Uh, Bob Moore, I will ask that you take the lead on this.
Yeah.
And I asked, would you please report back? Is there enough time to so much? How much?
I think they're going to have to report back when they can.
All right, make an attempt to please report back by the March Board of Selectmen's meeting. Because it gives you, gives you a month to
Yep.
dig up some good information. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to number seven. Appointments and resignations. At this time, I would like to say a very special thank you to protect the board clerk who has done so much work for the town and, uh, I would like a motion to accept her resignation with, uh, with thanks and gratitude. Thank you, Adam. And we have a motion. I need a second.
Yeah.
Bob Moore, a second. Thank you. Uh, are there any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Moving on to the appointments, uh, we were reached out to by the Chairman of the Temporary Building Committee. They were having difficulty reaching a quorum. Uh, we had space for, uh, another member since one had resigned. So we would like to, at this time, uh, we can wait and take them all in one motion. Uh, but, uh, Steve was, Vicky has agreed and has said, yes, he would, and he's put in a letter, um, form of interest to be on the Temporary Building Committee. We have Matt Wright from South Road who has volunteered to say and put in a form of interest to be on the Ethics Committee. Uh, we need two Democrats for that board to fill it out. It's by our ordinance. It is, needs to be two Rs, two Ds, and two U's or other party. It doesn't say our other party, unfortunately, so that's something we should look at and make a correction at some point. So, uh, Matthew has, uh, agreed to serve on that committee, as has Basheer Kea. Uh, she is also a Democrat and, um, that will then give us enough members to be able to hold a, uh, meeting that is long, long, long overdue. And we're there looking, we're looking forward to be asking them to meet in the month of March, mid-March, and to go over the uh, bylaws and ordinances that, and regulations that are applicable, as well as state statute. And then the last one would be, uh, to appoint Kathleen McCavanagh, uh, as the Emergency Management Director for the Town of Bolton. Jim, would you like to address that?
Well, we we have, you know, we've talked about this, you know, briefly a little bit in the past. You know, my recommendation is to, uh, appoint Kathy to this position because she's the one person who is not an emergency responder that has been most involved in the activities of emergency management. I think she's proven to be an asset in those circumstances. And, uh, she she does a lot of the work for us a- as a support member now. So that that is my recommendation. We can, you know, we can certainly discuss that in greater detail if you like. Um, you know, the position, I'm also recommending that, um, you know, we we pay her some additional funds in her salary uh, to a, to a, about sixty-two hundred dollars a year, which is, I believe, almost entirely supported by the funds that we receive from the Emergency Management Performance Grant.
Is that an annual grant?
It is.
Is that one that comes from the state or the feds?
Yes.
Okay.
I I can support Kathy in that. It it's, I I think she will do a very good job there. She's been an asset right along to Jim when he was handling it. And, uh, he'll he's there as a backup should we need it and and for advice, but I think Kathy can handle this on her own just fine.
Are there any comments about any of the candidates before us? We have four candidates before us for different positions.
I can support all of them.
Likewise.
Then I would take one, I I would, uh, take one motion.
I move we, uh,
Bob Moore?
Approve the appointments as presented, uh, to the Temporary Public Building Committee, Ethics Committee, and Emergency Management Director.
Second.
Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it passes unanimously. Moving down to reappointments, we have Robert Moore, we have Richard Hayes and James Rupert, uh, before Alphabet Soup uh, for the Water Pollution Control Authority. Um, and at this time, I would like, I would take a motion to reappoint those three people.
So
They have a motion.
Yeah, I, I'll make the motion if I may.
No, you shouldn't.
Not, well, I just want, before you make the motion, you should have, um, Jim, uh, should be appointed as the alternate. Ju- just, just to clarify.
That's correct.
Make the motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion that Bob and Mr. Hayes both be appointed as full members and Jim be appointed as an alternate to the Bolton Water Pollution Control Authority.
Do I have a second? But, but DePietro, thank you. Will you abstain?
Yeah.
Bob Moore, Bob Moore will abstain at this time. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, passes four to zero with one, uh, with one absten- uh, one abstention, Bob Moore. Moving on then, thank you very much and thank you for your service, Bob and and Jim and, uh, Riches. And we have two more positions to fill for that board that we are looking for members.
Two, two more regular and one more alternate.
And we are hoping to be able to get other parties, people from other parties and affiliated people as well.
That many Bolton?
Four. There Bolton, Bolton has four.
And two alternates.
We have two alternates.
Have any ideas? Please let Jim know. I have been reaching out to many people and somehow this is not one of the more interesting ones.
Well, and we, and we struggle to make a quorum. So it's really important. We try to fill the, uh, fill the roles.
Moving on then to number eight, properties and facilities report, Jim.
I think I think the big thing is that we're near nearly done with the work at the two rooms on notch at Natural Municipal Center for meeting spaces, the the facelift and the work is coming along very nicely. And we are, I will report that we are looking to make those two rooms fully accessible with regard to their second exits. That that is part of our ongoing plan so that we potentially have options for other uses of those spaces. I didn't discuss the bathroom. I I can tell you that we're 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 changing the 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 fixtures in the restroom so that they are adult size rather rather than child size.
It is a single a single toilet facility and will be listed listed as a restroom.
And if we and if we have, you know, a need, you know, for meetings or gatherings of any sort, you know, we have the ability to open the doors between those spaces in the senior center so that there is access to an accessible restroom.
Do we want to just establish a trip connectivity or?
So they, I I think we've reported already that work on tree cutting for the connectivity trail is underway. The we do have the tree preservation specialists under contract at this point. And they are, I believe, intending to do tree trimming of the subject trees on Friday this week. And they will participate when the trail itself starts getting getting constructed so that we are being sure to preserve and protect the roots of that. We engaged with Joe Dillon's firm to do a survey of the subject property where we are looking to apply for the trails grant for the parking area. That survey is complete. So Joe Dillon will be putting a plan and a budget together for the project and we believe that we are on time with regard to being ready and able to submit the grant.
Any questions for Jim? Hearing on the moment, the budget report.
Budget report pretty much remains the same as the last meeting. There's no significant changes. Unless there's any questions, we can probably just continue on in our agenda.
To the first selectmen's report. I just wanted to share that there had been, over the weekend, our State Police had voted in on Sunday morning that there had been, he believed, almost a hundred, if not more, vehicles that had been rifled through on Birch Mountain and where in the case, he said it was very odd looking to drive down the street in the dark and see four car doors open on these vehicles, house after house after house. And apparently there had been a stop by some perpetrators in Manchester and because of the way laws are at the moment, they were not obtained. And they suspect they were the same, could be the same people doing the same because it followed.
Several video captures.
So.
Yes.
Just to share with everybody. So we have that and we also have upcoming. I've been asked to share that there is the farm, our our heritage farm is going to be used for Winter Fest coming up on the twenty-fifth. They've asked for prayers for snow. So if anybody can help us out with that, that would be great. I've heard from next door, our neighbors next door, but there's going to be an amazing corned beef dinner. That's enough said about that. And do I have more news? I don't have any more news than that that I can I can share at this time. Is there anything else, Mister? Town administrator.
Most of the stuff in my report, we've already hit on, but I did get the application for the neglected cemeteries grant taken care of last Friday. We did, you know, go through our cold weather protocols for February third and fourth. I will report that although we had staff checking the buildings, we were very fortunate it had no damage in any of our buildings as a result of the cold. The job postings for the building official and program coordinator have gone out. We actually have three very highly qualified applicants for the building official position. And as of today, we have several applicants for the program coordinated position. So we are going to be looking to set up interviews for those two positions very soon. I have a call into Eagle Leasing, which is the state vendor for temporary structures and I've started the dialogue with the Health Department regarding what we're gonna have to do to connect septic and water lines to those temporary structures. And we are, excuse me, currently undergoing supervisor reviews. And the EMPG grant was recently signed and submitted and that is a that that in itself is a regular occurrence.
Thank you. At this time then, if there are no further questions for him, I would like to revisit the request that we had from a board member to go back to have a discussion. To start off with my introduction to Ray Hardy regarding three eighty-four. The interchange and the discussion came about because of the DOT looking at plans to move Notch Road and they're they're in a very early stage planning. Mister Armita asked to have this discussion brought back, so at this time I will entertain that. Mike Armita?
Yeah, the
We should have a motion to add it to the agenda.
I thought we did.
Also move.
I'll second it. I thought we did voted on this before, but I might be wrong.
Well, I was going back and putting it under for the oh, again. Do you want to?
You've got a motion and a second, you can just.
You got a vote, get a vote on the motion. Motion is to allow the discussion on intersection of three eighty-four and Notch Road.
Thank you. In a second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are we at five? Thank you. All right, Mike, would you like to lead up the discussion?
Yeah, we, you know, we, I I was in on the meeting, you know, when the when the state presented the the change to Notch Road and the intersection and everything. And their big thing was they're gonna make the signs smaller to make it look like a country road as opposed to an interstate, which nobody looks at the signs anyway that drives that every day. So their whole idea of of making it look like a country road, even though it's an interstate, is a little foolish, but but that's the state and I'm not gonna really get into that. My my big thing was to prohibit town vehicles from accessing the other side of town, forty-four via Notch Road. I believe that it's far too dangerous. We actually cross that in the middle of the day with our tractor, which mows the side of the lawns, the roads, and that does downhill with a tailwind about twenty miles an hour. And there's no way that can get out of the way of an oncoming bus or something like that or a car. And we cross it with dump trucks with snow plows and and I think I think it's just a disaster looking for a time, not a place, because I know the place. I think it's looking for a time where we're gonna pull across there with a big piece of equipment or something and a carload of nuns is gonna slam into the side of it and that'll be it for us. And and I believe that it's appropriate considering the fire department has timed it and we we figure it's about thirty-five to forty seconds longer to go Williams Road and down that way onto the road and get over to forty-four than it is to go down Notch Road and take your life in your hands crossing over with a big piece of equipment. And and I just believe that the town should enact a a policy that we don't use that road, period. We've, we're actually writing it into our SOPs at the fire department because it's just too dangerous. You know, I I I had used that in the past and Pete Moore can attest to it that I went across there one day with my own pickup truck, which accelerates like a sports car with lights and siren going and a guy come came around the corner and skidded sideways and almost plowed into me. And I don't have a slow moving vehicle. I was stomping on it and after that, which happened a couple of years ago, I decided that it was gonna be my project to make sure that nobody else with a town vehicle did that. And and I I think it's within our control to just enact a policy which says no town vehicle whatsoever shall cross over Notch Road to get to forty-four. And and that's that's my whole case in a nutshell. I I I believe it's just too dangerous and it's something we can stop simply by putting our pen to paper and saying, don't do it. It's it's not something that that needs signage or needs anything. It's it's our trucks, our people. And all we have to do is say from today forward, you're not to do it. And it's done. It's it's a very simple procedure, very simple way to make our town safer with absolutely no cost and no fuss and no muss. It just, that's the end of it.
There have been, that I know of, I can remember, two deaths in that particular intersection. Adam, do you have a nodding? Can you think of anything?
I don't think that town staff should be using it in town vehicles, but I'm not sure that we need to to direct that other than to have the town administrator direct the.
So just to fill in other members that may not know, we went before with CROG and we handed DOT back their own plan from two thousand and fifteen sixteen to redesign and fix that so that that Notch Road ends and you go out Cook Drive Cook and Notch Road Extension and goes around and then there's a loop around and then everything overpasses and underpasses and it comes out around and would then meet Quarry Road on the other side of of England's Plaza. And we put the we put the plan back at them and I will be very blunt and say they were stunned that we didn't just act thrilled. And then they came back at us another, the next time. And I'm gonna say this in front of Jim and Bob who are there. I was insulted because they came back with their landscape plan on how nice this was going to look when they fixed the notch and put landscaping without addressing the safety issue first. I was, I was insulted and I know it's because I have a personal history of having worked on the Route Six extension expressway issue for over fifteen years. I've lived right there. I know what the issues are. And yet I do know that we should have a way for pedestrians to get through there. The DOT did come back and say that there is a project to re sign our end of the expressway to say and puts big signs out there, Mike, big signs out there that says expressway ends.
But but the lady from DOT said that they wanted to make smaller signs so it looked like a country road, but regardless.
Take them from the, they're gonna take them from the overhead stanchions and put them on the sides, give it a country road appearance. They have a certain requirement for size signage, but they then added, this was since then, since that meeting, Mike.
Yep.
The subsequent meeting, was it they're gonna put those large bright orange ones you see at the end of Route eleven? Talk about expressway ends.
Yeah.
But but the those.
Anyway.
Those places Pam have good sightlines at the end of the roads and this is a place with a blind corner and people pulling out with vehicle. I'm talking, I'm not talking about my sports car flying out of there. I'm talking a twenty-ton truck with a snowplow in snow coming down and bad weather and trucks that don't accelerate more than you gotta go two hundred yards to get it up to twenty, twenty miles an hour and.
Nobody's arguing with you on that. And I just wanna follow up with with Pam was saying, our argument back to the state was we have a design that changes the intersection that makes it safe. Anything other than that is totally unacceptable, period.
But that's that's something that we're looking at millions of dollars and gotta get the state agencies to be involved in. We can always open it up again should they make it a safe intersection, but right now we have an intersection that is disastrous. And we can stop ourselves from being part of the disaster simply by putting out a memo or an order to all our people that no town vehicle crosses that road that way. It's it's simple and cheap.
Thank you for the discussion and thank you for the the thoughts. Are there other board members that want to address the issue of this evening? If not, then I would ask that we would consider that we could put this on a future agenda item. Time to reach out to other.
Who do we reach out to?
The town administrator, the chance to talk to our 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 crews because to get a little feedback. Get a policy, let's all get behind the policy and go for.
Close the road, correct? You're asking to.
Stop town vehicles operated by town employees from crossing over.
And school buses?
Absolutely. School buses are the worst.
I I have a, I have a just some food for thought and perhaps I should reach out to the town attorney on this issue. I think, you know, issuing a memorandum discouraging use of that, you know, cro- crossing that intersection is one thing, but what happens if we create a policy? Somebody fails to follow the policy and there's an accident after there's a policy. I wonder if that raises our our liability.
Right now you've got the liability anyway, because I just put it on the table here and they can play this back and and know exactly what's going on. And if you go talk to the people at the street department or the park department, street department especially, they're gonna say it's not a big deal. We do it all the time. Yes, you do it all the time and it's more convenient for you. And you get you back to the garage quicker so you can go home earlier and all those kinds of things, but it's not safe. And if you wanna check with the town attorney, that's fine and dandy. I don't have a problem with that, but I know and and I'm I'm not the smartest guy at this table, but I can see a disaster in the making. I've been to so many accidents in my life dealing with death and dismemberment and horrendous things that nobody in their lives would ever want to deal with. And I I've picked up bodies with squeegees and I don't wanna be there doing that, especially when it involves one of our trucks and our people. It's just not smart. It's it's, I don't wanna put it off to another meeting. I don't wanna study it. I I want some action on it and and if the town votes, i- i- if if I'm outnumbered here and people think it's safe, well, then fine, I'll just close my eyes and when the tone goes off and it says that one of our dump trucks just got plowed into by, like I said, the car full of nuns, I'm gonna stay, I'm gonna stay in my house and not go.
Mike, Mike, before you go any further with that comment, please, I'm gonna say, ask at this time, it is quarter of ten. It has been a very, very long meeting. I would like to address this again and I would ask for your indulgence to please hold your conversation now because you've made a very, I think, valid point, a good point, and I think we've had some good conversation that we will put it on the next meeting in March and we'll get some feedback from the town. And you can think about what motion, if you wish, to put forward at that time after you've heard a report back from the town administrator or you can speak to him beforehand. Could I ask for that if you'll indulge me, please?
I I will pray during the next thirty days that the disaster that I envisioned doesn't happen.
Yes, sir. We we're all in the same thought process is that safety is paramount. Thank you very much, and at this point. We have a motion on the table to adjourn, all in favor. If we say aye. Thank you all, very good meeting.